We're recording now. So, thanks for coming, Barb and Sarah. Anyone want to volunteer to go first to introduce yourselves to our readers?
Sure, I'll go first. My name is Sarah McCormick and I'm running for city council, position six. I moved here four years ago with my husband. We have two little boys. I feel that I bring a unique perspective to the city council because I am a young mom. Or I'm the mom of a young family. I also have seen that how the rules set by the city impact small business here. My family's business is the Pine Tavern Restaurant. And, you know, I really want to see Bend remain a place to, that I'm proud to call home. And I want there to be opportunities for my boys as they grow older to come back and visit me if, once I'm here as an older person. And as it grows, we have to make sure that it is affordable for young people. And it's getting to the point where it's not. And that scares me. And I want to help alleviate that by having a say on city council. And I'm also, having come from Portland, I'm concerned about the growing homeless problem and its impact on small business. I've watched downtown Portland go from a place that I could go with my dad as a kid to now I don't feel comfortable bringing my kids there. And businesses are fleeing because of the, I mean, the homeless have really taken over. And I don't want to see that happen to Bend. And it seems to slowly, I mean, it's not something that happens overnight. And it seems to slowly be happening here.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. I am running for reelection. It's been just a real honor to represent the citizens of Bend for my first term. I ran the first time around and I am running for reelection. I just really focus on that term representative. I see us as, we really, we are spending other people's money. Quite frankly, we are in charge of people's tax money. We are making decisions on their behalf. And so, I see myself as coming from a part of the population that isn't often served in elected office. And, you know, quite frankly, just part of the workforce. I have, when I first moved to Bend, I moved to Bend 27 years ago. There were still logs in the river. And I worked for Mount Bachelor. I worked for Mount Bachelor. They had a bar downstairs called The Castle Keep. And I was a cocktail waitress. And my brother and I started a construction company and built homes. And so, for a decade, I was a carpenter by day, cocktail waitress by night. I was director of a little daycare center when I first got out of college. I worked at a little book bindery when I was living on the east coast. I grew up in Colorado. I am, I see myself as that person that we are trying to help here in Bend. That was me. I moved here, I worked for the mountain, I worked in the service industry, I built homes. And then I started getting older and I started seeing how it was affecting my physical health. And I got more education. I went back to school. I got more education, I got a teaching certificate, and I started teaching school. And I taught eighth grade science. And then came back here, that was in Burns is where I was teaching. Moved back to town and opened my own business. So, I am that person. I have gone from working in the service industry, making minimum wage plus tips, to where now I own my own business. And I want to make sure that pathway is still there for other people. I'm afraid that our affordability problem is such that those current bartenders, those current waitresses, they can't even stay in town at all. Much less actually stay in town, get some more education, move into that job that is maybe a better career fit. So, it would just, it'd be a real honor to represent people again. I feel like we have made some real strides, starting to attack our biggest problems. It's kind of like a little garden. We planted some seeds and they're popping up. And I want to be there and water them and fertilize and make sure that they continue to grow. And I know that process can be just really slow and frustrating for people. But, you know, it does, it takes time, it takes attention to honestly see changes on the ground from policy decisions that have been made.
Okay. Well, since it's something that, there's a thread that is tied together here. You mentioned homelessness being an issue, or homeless folks being an issue and impacting downtown business owners, or you're a downtown business owner. So, maybe you want to start from your perspective as a downtown business owner. Tell me how it has or has not impacted you. And let's talk about some solutions to homelessness.
Absolutely, absolutely. Homelessness, homelessness is a problem that affects absolutely all of us, the entire country. What I have seen is that every city, exactly as you said, Portland believes that they are the epicenter of the homeless problem. Our citizens feel like, you know, we're some sort of, there's, people are coming here targeting us, you know, we're some kind of a draw. We attract homeless people. Just a month ago, I was in Colorado Springs and heard that exact same concern from my brother, that homeless people were literally moving to Colorado Springs in particular. And I hear that about Bend. And I don't think that's true. I'm afraid the problem is just so big, it's everywhere. It's Bend, it's Colorado Springs, it's Portland, it's San Francisco. And so, we have got to be compassionate to the individuals who are caught in that problem. And we can't lump them in with people who are choosing a lifestyle that may cause problems for other people. So, in order to help those who need the help, I have focused on the problems that are created. And so, we started with that Mirapon parking lot. We knew that that was a particular area. We are redesigning the entire parking lot, but started by just plain modifying the dumpster enclosures. We knew that actual crime was taking place in those dumpster enclosures. We changed the budget in order to provide a police officer on the ground downtown for the entire summer. And then we also supplemented with an additional security staff person. We have put a police substation in the parking garage. Parking garage is another place where we know we have a focus of actual problems that are created by these people. And so, that's another place where we're putting effort. We've got a police substation going in. We're looking at actual redesign of the parking garage if it needs it, additional lighting, taking out some walls if we need to, quite frankly, where there might be a hidden place. So, this is an example, you know, of the little garden that we planted. We've already got some of these things underway. Now, we need to give it a little time to see, are these changes helping? Is it enough? Do we need to take an additional step?
So, our family business, the Pine Tavern, is kind of right where all of the homeless conflict has happened. A lot of our staff have had run-ins with the folks down there. And we've had bikes stolen, we've had people breaking into the restaurant. And there's kind of a runaway train. I sat with the chief of police this week and talked to him about different solutions. And right now, there isn't an option for mental health, for mental health treatment. If one of these individuals is having an episode, they have to go to the ER. There's no, there's no solution within the city of Bend. So, I think we need to consolidate our resources with the county, who have a mental health facility, to tackle the problem together. It's going to be a group effort. But I don't think that we should be, we need a compassionate approach to this that does not involve allowing these folks to be camping because it also, that poses a public health risk because of the human waste and the needles. And it's, it brings down the property values of the homes and people nearby these camps. And it's not within the jobs of the police to allow that to happen. I think that we need to come up with a better solution towards relocating these folks. And the police, the chief of police said that it was like a game of whack-a-mole. As soon as they get rid of one camp and clean it out, another one seems to pop up. So, it's going to be a big, long discussion. And there are a lot of options. And I just look forward to working with the city council on finding the best solutions for those.
So, I know one solution that's been posed, and, you know, city, county, and private folks have posited, or posed the idea of a dedicated homeless camp that could be a partnership between a number of different agencies. So, I'll ask you first, would you support a dedicated homeless camp that would offer services like bathrooms and garbage service and those sort of things, so you're not playing that whack-a-mole?
I think that's a really slippery slope. I used to live in Vancouver, B.C., and their homeless problem is pretty bad. And they did something similar like that. They opened a, it was like an apartment building, and it was housing for homeless. And within two years, this was a multi-billion dollar building. It was a hotspot for crime and overdoses. And it was not what our idealistic approach to, oh, we'll give them homes and everything will be peachy, but it's not. It will become a place of drug use. And I do not think that that's the best approach.
Do you have another alternative that you have in mind as far as best practice around, you know, places that are doing it well?
I think that the best approach is going to be addiction and mental health treatments. Because until you treat those two problems, you're not, you're not coming up with a solution.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, it's just, it's not moles and they're not camps, they're people. And, I mean, I completely understand. I started, when I started my business nine years ago, I was in that spot adjacent to the Pine Tavern. That was five years before you moved to town and your family bought the Pine Tavern. And you're right, I mean, just that little part of downtown has changed a lot, even between when I started my business and you moved to town. But we just can't forget that they're people. The solution you're talking about, that's called a crisis stabilization center, which you're absolutely right. Our police officers don't have a place to take someone who is in crisis beyond the emergency room. And it takes hours. They can't just drop someone off. They have to wait for intake, and that can be hours. The crisis stabilization center, I have been working on that through our local public safety committee, which is a committee between county law enforcement and the city. It includes the Redmond Police and the sheriffs. And the county took the lead on that project because they are the lead for public health. Counties do, the health department is generally the system in our country. And it became clear that the sheriff wanted part of it to be a training center. And it got a little bit wrapped around the axle and slowed down, quite frankly. I'm one who, every meeting, what's the holdup on this? We've been talking about it for two years. So, it's absolutely underway and it's absolutely happening. It's just another example, you know, when it is a multi-agency, we are trying to share a facility with the Deschutes County Sheriff's Department. Yes, I suggested, kind of what you're talking about in our last meeting, quite frankly, a homeless camp. I didn't suggest it, it exists. We already have a homeless camp in our city. The largest one that we know about that is within our city is at Juniper Ridge. There are, we know that there might be as many as 20 camps of people who are living up there. And so, that is creating problems. There is no question about that. And more important than that, it's creating an actual danger for neighbors, for fire in particular. So, we have already taken steps to do the fire cleanup that we need to out there, so that no kind of a fire can spread, will spread as easily into the neighborhoods, whether it's started by a lightning strike or by someone trying to propel themselves a meal. So, I've done research into this. I've attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference in Portland and toured a similar, they call it a dignity village, where you allow people to live in tiny homes. You allow people maybe to live in tents. There's a very central, so minimum, I mean, in Portland, one of these spots just has a cinder block building with shared cooking spaces. They literally do porta-potties, bring in water, so a person might be able to take a shower every few days. It is very low intensive as far as resources go. You're really just more strategically cleaning up. And that human waste part of it, it is, that is a really important thing. People need porta-potties, they need bathrooms. And so, to me, it seemed like we, they are already there. They are in a place that is separated away from the city, that is surrounded by land that is zoned industrial. This might actually be the place in our own city where we could try this. We could try on this, just basically let them be, but clean up the problems they create. And then I will just also mention, I've been working on a Housing First group with Councilor Abernathy. That group is a combined, I'm sorry, I'm stuttering, is a combination of us representing city council, there, George from the health department is there from Deschutes County, Sally Pfeiffer, who is a tremendous provider of housing. She provides super housing for folks. Housing First is the opposite. Housing First comes from the philosophy that people can't turn their lives around until they have a place to spend the night, until they can get a night's sleep. Then they can go to AA meetings, then they can try and get treatment for their addiction. So, we really are try, it's just a huge problem. And we are, we're trying to get at it in a lot of different ways. It's a little garden. I've been working on it. I hope my little plants are going to yield some fruit someday.
What else do we want to go now?
Well, the mentioning Juniper Ridge brings up, I think, one of the things in the city that's been a persistent issue, which is, what do we do with Juniper Ridge? I mean, that was developed, or it was put out there years and years ago as a potential, you know, I guess you would say.
Opportunity.
Opportunity, yes. I was searching for the right word there. Obviously, that has not all come to fruition. What do we, I mean, it is owned by the city, it is, you know, there's so many different tentacles involved in this issue. What do you see, where do we go? Where do we go from here? What do we do? How do we turn it into a positive address?
Go ahead, Sarah. So, Juniper Ridge is, I met with the builders this week. And they, we are in a prime opportunity economy-wise, like we are in a golden era. We, if we're going to develop Juniper Ridge, it should happen now. Let's strike while the iron's hot. There, if they were to build it out and make a small, little community out there, it would give housing, it would, there'd be jobs for people. They want, they were talking about dedicating 40 to 60 acres of that land to affordable housing. And I, I think that getting a committee together ASAP, let's do this while we can, so it doesn't just sit there for another 20 years.
So, you would support the 40 to 60 acres of affordable housing?
Yes.
What, any thoughts on how you would enforce that or ensure that that can stay affordable?
Well, I think that with keeping up with supply and demand, that's how we're going to keep everything affordable, is by continuing to build. If we restrict the growth and the building of houses, then the demand for the homes that are here is just going to go up and along with the home prices.
But would you, would you support like putting a program in place to oversee that the fact, you know, to keep the prices down in that dedicated zone?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to be clear on that. Barb?
Yep, so, at our meeting this week, we started the process to form that committee to get Juniper Ridge back on track. You are absolutely right. That's an excellent question. Juniper Ridge has been, it just, not even back burner, it's been on the counter. There was a lot of effort, and obviously great expense to purchase the property in the first place. A master plan was made, and then it got, you know, forget counter, up in the cupboard somewhere. That was not good for our citizens to have that big investment not being worked on. You're absolutely right, Sarah. The market has switched. We have been selling lots up there. We've sold a couple just in the last year, which means we actually do have some funds to be able to use toward moving forward with that development. Land sales at Juniper Ridge need to stay within the Juniper Ridge project. We can't use that money to pave the roads or to build water pipes or something. And so, last, at our most recent meeting, we decided what we think the makeup of a committee would look like. We believe it's going to take a citizen committee to, of honestly, experts. We believe in real estate itself, quite frankly, real estate marketing, in economic development. And at our meeting this week, it looks like we really will be targeting first jobs out there in economic development. We are in an application process with the state to have 50 acres of affordable housing that would be deep restricted, affordable housing at a certain targeted level of the market. That project is closer to the central of the city. That project is on Highway 20, just past 27th Street. It's a pilot program, and we've got an application into the state. And we honestly might hear any day. We're super excited about that. Quite honestly, if that comes through, I would say that's where our energy needs to go. We have limited staff, we have limited resources. We are trying to get the southeast opportunity area, which came about through the UGB process. That's a big area of town in the southeast. That is one of the first areas of new land that you will see coming, brought into the city, new lands available for housing, new lands available for jobs. And then we have what we refer to as opportunity areas, like in the middle of the city, over there in the Makers District. We believe that's an excellent spot to really get some high-density housing, actual apartment building maybe, close to jobs that already exist. And so, for me right now, I think we have a good plan. It's for Juniper Ridge. It is to get a team actively involved in making that happen. One of the things we've learned was how much effort it actually took to get the Brinson Industrial Park developed. That was frankly something I didn't know, I wasn't an elected official at that time. And I learned that it was. It was developed, it was the property owners, they had a developer, they had a team strategically thinking about, do we want to sell these lots first? Should we put in a road in order to sell lots? You know, it takes thought, you know, you can't just put lots on the market and hope that people will come. That's what we've been doing. We have sold a couple of that, but now we need a plan.
Let's see, what else? Well, you know, we can't have a discussion in the city without talking about funding for dredging Mirapon, so let's just go there. Barb, why don't you start? What are your, what are your proposals or what kind of way forward do you propose?
And you specifically asked about funding for Mirapon, and you're absolutely right.
Okay, so maybe I should frame this a different way, for a two-part question. Do you support dredging the Mirapon? And if so, how do we pay for it?
No, I do not support dredging. That is, is and has been my position as a private citizen for years and years and years and years. It's something I have, it was something I put my own personal activism toward before I was elected to city council. I see it as a fairly easy choice from a standpoint of the environment. I would like to see Deschutes red-ban trout in our river. That's, they have a special name because they're supposed to be there. It's a warm murky pond right now. It's not a connected part of the Deschutes River. But as a city councilor, I can clearly see that there are no changes, frankly, to Mirapon that would have any large environmental effect for the whole river. It is a small piece. There are dams downstream, there are dams upstream. And so, you know, it would be just a small marginal improvement for those fish to take out that dam. But as a private citizen, that's where I am. As a public official, it is, it has to do with funding for the pond. We in our city, Bend is very unusual, even in Oregon, Bend is unusual, that the city of Bend doesn't have a parks department. The city of Bend has a parks district. They are separate from the city. They have their own tax base. Their tax base is nearly two-thirds that of the city of Bend. And with that money, the only mission they have is to take care of the parks. In my opinion, they do a great job at that. Our park system is amazing, it's beautiful. But we're talking about a pond that is in the middle of a park in a city where the parks district is separate from the city. I simply don't see a path where it is appropriate for me to spend any portion of our limited city budget on that project to beautify a park. I see citizens who are terrified they could lose their homes if they can't afford to get off of their septic systems and onto sewer. There are 2,800 of those homes. A million dollars was all we could scrape together to even start to approach that problem in the city of Bend budget. A million dollars is just so much money, and we just don't have it. So, as a city councilor, it is, you're absolutely right to ask me about the budget. That is where my focus is, that's where my attention is. Is it even appropriate to be asking us to help fund that project? I really don't think it is. Our only piece in it has to do with storm drains. And our storm drains just have nothing to do with dredging. It just doesn't. We should fix those, we have plans to fix those. We have no intention of leaving those in there forever. But it just, it has nothing to do with dredging the pond. They, you know, that's just a separate decision we need to make.
I mean, I know the owners of the pond, the lands under the pond have said that, they've offered their evidence that the storm drains are adding sediment. And so, do you think the city's plan forward is going to adequately address that portion?
They have offered that argument that they don't have the data to support it. Jason Conger challenged our permit for those outflows. I mean, there is an appropriate agency to decide whether or not we get to keep those outflows. We don't just get a dump stormwater into a river. We have a permit, and that permit comes from the Department of Environmental Quality. Jason Conger, perhaps funded by folks who would like to see the pond there, challenged our permit. And even under a challenge, the Department of Environmental Quality said, no, what we're doing is okay. They did not find toxins. They did not find some outrageous quantity of cinders off of our roads. This last year, we did not buy any additional snow plowing equipment. We bought an additional street sweeper. It is not true that we dump cinders on the road and just leave them there to wash into the river. That's false. We go in immediately after with street sweepers. It is true that we live in a desert and we just. sweepers. It is true that we live in a desert, and we just, we haven't had a drop of rain all summer, literally, right? There is nothing, a single drop of water flowed into the Deschutes River because of our storm up close for months now, right? You know, this is why we're allowed to have them. This is why the agency is giving us enough time to find funding to gradually remove them when we improve Gallaston Avenue.
Okay. So Sarah, let's move to you, and going back to the two-part question. Do you support dredging Mirror Pond, and if so, how, how does the city contribute financially?
So I've got a little bit of a bias, because like I mentioned before, the Pine Tavern sits on Mirror Pond. But aside from that, just being a resident to Bend, Mirror Pond is really the jewel of the, of downtown Bend. And with the dam there, the sediment is building. They've had biologists advise for dredging because the fish that live there are going to suffocate in the mud if we don't dredge it. And, and so, yes, I'm for the dredging of Mirror Pond. As long as we have the dam there, it has to be done. And the city council just appointed a committee to look at the funding for, the funding options for that. And I want to let the committee do its work before I endorse, ooh, sorry, before I endorse a court of action. And also, the, a lot of work was done to get permits to dredge. And the Army Corps of Engineers, I mean, the decisions, all of the paperwork is there to get it done. They just need to have it paid for. So I'm for it. I support it. I, I hope that the funding committee comes up with a way to pay for it.
It's absolutely true. It is the thing that attracts new residents to Bend. This is why her family fell, they sold a giant seafood restaurant chain. They had restaurants all around the country, and somehow or another decided on the Pine Tavern to purchase, which, you know, really does say so much about our community, that when you have a family that literally is able to choose any restaurant in the entire country and purchase it and move there, what, where did they choose? You know, it was Bend. And, you know, it is true. That is the first thing. So many people come when they first come to Bend, like you did four years ago. They see Mirror Pond, and they think, this is it? This is where I want to be. But the fact is, most of our citizens live on the east side of town. Most of our citizens, the area median income, not half, but we have two separate area median incomes. Over on the side of town that is, that is near that pond, their median income is twice, it literally is twice what it is on the east side of town. I don't know how I tell those people that they can afford to keep up this beautiful little landscape feature in a much wealthier part of town.
Right. So I want, yeah, I want to dial back to that question of, I'm sure you've had some opportunity to, you know, understand the city budget. So do you think it's actually feasible to find some place in the, in the city budget to, to pay for a portion of this?
I think it used to be a joint effort between the landowners, business owners, and the city, and the Parks Department. As Barb was saying, the Parks Department has the means to do it. They use the pond for their various different float down the river. They just put in that white water, white water feature that costs millions. And I, I think that it's gonna be a joint effort to pay for it.
Okay. What next? What next? How many games do we have for these folks?
Want to go to septic to sewer, or you want to go to transit room tax?
Um, let's see, how much time do we have? Okay, we have 15 minutes left. Why don't we do the TRT stuff? We're not doing that?
No, we're not doing that. We have 15 minutes left. Yeah, no, I'm serious. I was listening to myself thinking, well, it's gonna be a long afternoon.
Mindful of your time. I wanted to make that mindful of your time. So Chris, why don't you frame the question for us?
Okay, so, I don't know how versed you are in your TRTs around here, but, so I'm curious for both of you, do you support giving more of the TRT taxes to the general fund? And so if that TRT money lessens, what options do you believe are available? Like sales tax? You know, can we really, really rely on SDCs, especially if we want to have true affordable housing?
Barb, why don't you take this one first?
You bet. And I will just admit, I was focused on the first part, which is, do I support putting more of the TRT money into the general fund? That's, it's just not legal. There, we tried, oh, we tried that. We tried. The time was like...
Can we reserve here? If, if, that's, that's the, obviously, that's the current situation. I think probably the question there would be, would you be in favor of a change in the, in the law in that regard?
Yeah, absolutely. So what has already been changed is they have put in a provision that we can spend some of the money on a tourist facility. And there's been very little information. There's, there just haven't been cities trying to find out what do they mean by a facility. I happen to believe that downtown is a tourist facility in our town. There aren't enough people. We know for a fact, we have something like 20,000 individual people on our streets every day in the summertime. I believe that we could collect actual receipts from downtown. We know what the zip codes are. That's all public information. I think we could collect data to prove to the state that we have a particular area of downtown that has so many tourists there every single day that spend so much money, that we should be able to improve the infrastructure there with tourist money. So even if it can't go into the general fund, we can use it in that same way, even though it might still only be targeted to a particular part of town. If we could maintain streets and sidewalks and actually improve, and we'd be parking downtown, or the Old Mill District, or Northwest Crossing, or around the water park with TRT funding, I think that's the kind of push where we might actually be able to make progress with the state without ending up in court breaking the law about what we must do with the money. And then the second part, please, if you, I'm so sorry. I think it was a three-part question.
Oh, sure. I remember the first one. I'm sorry. I forgot.
Yeah.
I think it was, so if, if we continue to, this year was a down year in terms of hotel taxes. If we continue that trend, what other funding sources might be proposed? What, you know, how are we gonna, how are we gonna populate the city?
We already did it. It was the fuel tax. You know, that really was, we have already proposed an additional funding stream, because that is what we need. Our funding problems in the city of Bend, particularly when it comes to streets, it really is, it's, it's a streets funding problem. We managed to fund our police. We managed to fund our fire. Streets is where we have a problem, and it's because of maintenance. We literally don't have a stream of funding for maintenance. We don't have a source of funding for maintenance. We were looking for a new source. The best idea there seemed to be fuel tax. We did not do a good job of explaining that to our citizens. That is something that I will own. That thing failed. And I believe it was because we didn't do a good enough job of explaining to them that in order to get any resources from those tourists, it's got to be some sort of a sales tax. It really does. They, they don't pay property tax. They don't pay employment tax. The way that we get tourists to actually help pay for the infrastructure they use is going to be either, the other one that came up was a food and beverage tax. I don't see the connection there. Just because somebody buys a delicious meal at the Pine Tavern, I don't think that means they should have to help with our streets. But if you buy gas, chances are you're using the streets. So I, you know, we do. We have a funding problem. That problem is still there.
Do you think it's realistic to bring back the gas tax?
Oh, I, I mean, looking at our state, yes, yes. More than half the citizens in the state of Oregon currently pay a fuel tax. And most of those cities, the fuel tax failed the first time it went out. It does take time to educate the public. It does take time to build a coalition. That's, you know, for example, why our transportation committee, we have set it up to take that time. We have set it up to spend an entire year and a half going to neighborhood association meetings, going to Rotary Clubs, going to anybody that wants to talk to us about transportation to try and build that knowledge, build that trust. It's really a trust issue with our voters.
Sarah, so now to recap the two parts of the question.
I don't even remember the question.
There was the question, the transit room taxes. And the first part was...
Go back there.
So, um, I think I remember the first part. So tourism right now is so critical to the economy, and I don't think that we should be pulling any funds from, well, also it's illegal, but from the, I think it goes to Visit Bend, if I'm not mistaken. I don't think that we should be pulling back on that. I don't think we have enough tourists. The more the merrier. I mean, I'll probably get in trouble for saying that, but the second part of the question was...
And that same like to, as Barb, would you be in favor, favor of a change of the law to allow additional uses of the transit room tax?
For things like street maintenance?
Right, right.
Uh, no, I wouldn't. I would not be for that right now. I, and we were talking about the fuel tax. That already went to a vote, and it was voted no. Like, we didn't, nobody wants to be paying more taxes, and it would hurt the people who are living here. A food and beverage tax, I've seen that in other places. I've visited, oh, I've visited Niagara Falls, and if you're local, they'll take the tax off your bill, but if you're not, and all the locals know, take this off my bill. I don't know if we would do that here, but, I mean, there are options that other cities are trying. So...
So you would be in support of, at least exploring a food and beverage shop?
Exploring, or, or not just...
You said the citizens didn't want more tax. They made that clear with the fuel tax. Do you think they want a different kind of tax?
I'm not saying that they, nobody wants more taxes.
But you're suggesting more taxes to pay. I mean, you're the one who just put that out there after saying that they don't want more tax.
I'm saying, I'm open, I'm open to hearing what, what the other options are for getting another tourist-type tax.
Okay. I think that's clear. You know, you both, you both seem in favor of, of tapping tourists as a funding stream in some way.
I'm in favor of someone at the city limits whose job it is to shake them upside down until all the change falls out of their pockets, in a gentle and loving way.
Okay, well, we are, we probably have time for one more issue. I know the septic to sewer is a big issue for a lot of folks. I'm just wondering if there's anything else that, or something else.
That was my last one, the septic to sewer.
All right, let's do that. Let's, let's say, okay, so right now, we have a plan that has been proposed by the Septic to Sewer Advisory Committee, correct? It has not been approved yet by the city council. Sounds like it would be about $25,000 per household with this, under this scenario. This scenario also involves not letting anyone lose their homes if they, if this is gonna be an issue to them. So I guess my question on that would be, is this the right way forward for the city of Bend to, and its citizens who are facing having to convert from septic to sewer?
I do not think that this is the best course of action. It's such a tricky situation, but the, there are other states that have done, Washington State, for example, does a, I think it's called a revolving fund. And we could look at that option. I just know that if that happened to my husband and I, and we had to, I guess the breakdown would be a give or take $250 additional a month. A lot of these people are on fixed incomes. And I, I do not think that that's, I don't think it's cool. I think that's a really, that's a lot of money. And I think that we should look at other options.
So I'm not sure I'm familiar with the revolving fund. Is that something...
It's a low interest, it's a low-interest fund, and it, I believe, is partially funded by the state. I know that there are a lot of federal grants that we are not allowed because of the depth of our groundwater, since it's three, I believe, 300 feet. If it were closer, then it'd be a public health issue, and the government would be waiting for the hookup. But because it's so deep in the ground, it's kind of on us.
Okay. You, you good?
Yeah, that's all I got.
Can I, can I add in here too, have each of them, you know, asking generally, but also, if not the current proposal that hasn't been approved yet that's, that's out there. But there's also been another option of a citywide fee, that, in other words, everybody would be quote-unquote benefiting from this in some way, shape, or form. So a citywide fee, would you be in favor of that as an alternative?
Ooh.
That we just go towards the septic to sewer, not the decommissioning. That's a separate thing. The decommissioning, the separate things.
I, I would have to learn more about how much that would be for each citizen before I would put in my two cents about it. I don't know enough about how, how that pencils out. But, yeah, I guess I would have to know more before I would comment on that.
Um, this is just an overwhelming problem. It really is. I described it at our last council meeting like a hurricane has struck our city. It's, we have targeted a study area. I volunteered for this committee, knowing it was gonna be one of the hardest ones ever. Honestly, I have spoken to our other council members. We have never had a problem like this, where we have some citizens in one part of town who are literally terrified. They could lose their home. They could lose their home. $25,000, even if we keep it at that low price, is not affordable. We understand that. But if we put the cost, as you, as we, as has been suggested, this is part, on everyone, the fact is, there's someone in every neighborhood who could lose their home. We have gotten to that point of affordability in our city. Any raise in our sewer rates, any raise in our sewer, you know, in any, it really is, it's almost this citizen versus citizen kind of a problem. But it is citywide. It's 2,800 homes citywide. That is almost 10% of our single-family homes. In my opinion, we have to think of this in terms of a natural disaster. We cannot, just the economic disruption alone of that many people losing their homes, it makes it a citywide problem. How many hairdressers are gonna leave town because they can't afford to stay because of their sewer? That's my favorite hairdresser. I, you know, we can't, we can't have that happen. So I volunteered on the committee, and we've been working on this for more than a year. It's another citizen committee. Almost all of those citizens do live, are affected by the problem. And that $25,000 number came from what it would cost if their system failed entirely. If their septic system failed, and they had to completely replace, place their septic system on their own. We believed that cost to be somewhere around $25,000. And so that was how we kind of came at that target of what might be fair, what might be equitable, because that's the only thing we can hope for. Affordable, there is always gonna be somebody who can't afford anything. So we're shooting for equitable. So the problem is, that $25,000, we have, we've gotten it down almost there, but it's only the cost in the streets. Decommissioning, you've got it exactly on the head, Judy. There's another cost those citizens face on their own property, decommissioning, which could easily be an additional $5,000. So we are, what we're looking at is funding sources for them. Low interest, no interest, kind of a loan. The other kind of solution we're looking at is called a local improvement district, where all of the costs are shared by the larger pot. That larger pot then pays some portion. The rest goes out to be shared by the city. In my opinion, there is no question that these costs will be shared by the entire city. The DEQ thinks that because we're on rock, that our groundwater is... The DEQ thinks that because we're on rock, that our groundwater is not at risk. I question even that. The rock we're on is fractured basalt. It's, it's in the name, it's fractured basalt. A crack in the rock could actually be essentially a sewer pipe just going all the way down to the groundwater. You know, even though it's a longer distance, there's no filtration that's going on there, like there is in the valley. So we have citizens who need our help. We have an environmental problem. And then the next problem we have is people wanting to redevelop their land. They simply, if they wanna put a new little ADU on there so that their child can stay in town after they graduate from college, they can't do that in that neighborhood now, because you can't do that unless you're hooked to city services. We immediately approached this as, our citizens need our help, and we found, started a process to help them. We have spent real money, we've spent, we approved another three-hundred-thousand dollars of city resources. But the simple fact is, if someone's system fails today, they, without our help, if we had done nothing so far, they would've gone to the county to get a permit. And the county would've said, no, you can't have a permit to repair, because the state won't allow us to give you that permit. We proactively, we did, we proactively waded into this just sticky, difficult situation. I do support a citywide contribution. Just in our last meeting, we heard from our city attorney that whether or not it's legal to apply what's called a fee on everyone could be problematic. So that's literally the next step right now, is our attorneys are working on finding out, because that was the suggestion from the committee.
Wait, so they were, they said, they said you cannot impose a fee?
So, thank you so much, I'm sorry, I went, you know, yeah. So the committee, yeah, the committee suggested a citywide fee. Suggest, we just call it a step fee. It will be the septic tank, something fun, I'm sorry. I have acronyms, right? And they suggested five dollars a month on sewer bills. They suggested it have a hard, you know, intake, we'd be able to say to our citizens, we're not just raising your rate by five dollars a month forever. We need this money for a particular project. When the project's paid for, the fee will go away. We heard from our city attorney that you must be able to legally show benefit to every single person paying the fee. And that means me, across town, on a helm that's been hooked to sewer since it was built, I believe it's there. I think, like I said, that, just that economic disruption. Yeah, my favorite electrician lives in that neighborhood. The best, the hairdresser in town lives in that neighborhood. If they end up having, you know, there's a cost to losing workers. There's a cost to people losing their homes. And we don't see it in the form of a charge on our bill, but we feel it, and we need to not, we need to make sure that doesn't happen. So I think, one way or another, our question is just how much? How much is the share? What share is that equitable, what's fair for everyone? And that's the part where we're still looking at what the committee recommended versus what we will actually go forward with.
So we're getting close to the end. I wanna throw out one last, just really easy question that I'm sure you, you know, you'll be able to answer in five sentences. Just kidding.
Yeah.
So, of course, you know, one of the largest issues and just notions, or whatever you wanna call it in the city, is just the issue of growth. There's a lot of different varying schools of thought about visions for growth of the city of Bend. So I'd just like to know what your vision is for growth? And these are things like, you know, are you in favor of sprawl versus going up in the city and things like that? So, who wants to go first?
I can go.
Okay.
So, I'm just learning about all of this, but it's my understanding that we have to, in order to extend the UGB, we have to be a little more densely populated. So we will have to go up in order to go out. And I think that the council needs to speak with one voice to the legislature, because currently the state implementation of the UGB is too restrictive, and we need to relax the land use laws so that we are able to move forward with extending the UGB. And we're, and I think we should all be in it together.
Do you think that's realistic to ask the state land use board to relax the laws statewide? How would we move forward with that?
Well, I know that they had to do it with the last expansion. And I do think it's, I mean, if we wanna keep Bend an affordable place to live, then we will have to grow out.
Okay, Barb?
We passed our plan for the UGB expansion last year. It was a long and drawn-out process. Unfortunately, the city made one application that was just bad. Just refused to even comply with the law. Just, I mean, it did. And the state essentially said so. The estate essentially said, oh, no, you start over, you start all the way over. The state was not happy with us. We started over, we started all the way over. We now have a plan going forward that the state is just head over heels with. And I myself am excited about. But what is true is the expansion system in our state means that our cities do, they grow in these fits and starts. You know, you cannot do an expansion except in these ways that are approved by the state. You have to do a UGB expansion. And so it does happen that year after year after year, and then in this case, because we have a delay, the only growth that people see is right in their neighborhood. It is within the existing city. And it seems overwhelming. They, you know, it really does seem like all of the growth that's happening is right on top of them. And that was in part because of a delay. But now we have a plan, we have a plan going forward. But the fact is that plan really, it is just a promise we have made. It's a promise, it is a three-hundred-page promise of this is what we're going to do. So our plan is expansion. We have expansion areas. As I mentioned, we have chosen one that we believe, we have chosen actually two that we believe hold the most promise. That, you know, that was one of the criteria, is where do we think we can get the most land the soonest? Which of these areas do we think is going to lead to property where people can build homes and property where people can build and businesses the soonest? And that was why we chose the northeast area, the northeast area. And then the other area we chose was opportunity area, right there, near downtown, that Makers District, that central area. We're putting a lot of effort into that. We think we can get a lot of housing entirely different. That's where we think we can get dens, apartments, people who really would like to try to live without a car. You know, there are people who wanna see if they could make that work. But we don't have a place for them right now. So, you know, it's very much, and then the third thing we wanted to make sure that we did is because the one that holds the most promise for the fastest redevelopment is the one that has very few property owners. You know, if there's a single owner, it's pretty easy to get them moving and get them selling and get them building. When you have a lot of property owners, but there's an equity problem there. We don't want to only have that opportunity for our huge property owners. We want opportunity for people who just have a little tent and garage that they wanna redevelop. So we've got another expansion area that is intentionally that. That's the one up at the northeast. That one is, you know, the fact is, it is, it's gonna take more city staff, more concentration on our parts to make sure that happens. But we wanted that equity of opportunity for those smaller property owners. We just, we didn't want just folks who, you know, frankly, are well-off already, do, get more well-off, you know. One meeting I said, I heard this as a quote in our country, it is easier in the United States than it has ever been to become a billionaire, to become a billionaire. But it's harder than it's ever been to become a millionaire. You know, think about that. When I think about that, you know what I wanna do? I wanna make more millionaires. You know, I do. You know, I wanna get people into that, you know, just comfortable place where the kids can go to college, and they can go on vacation, and they really do sleep well at night, you know, financially at night. Yeah, equity of opportunity, right? That's what our UGB holds as a promise for. It's mixed-use developments which will change our transportation system. You know, it is, I am really optimistic about that thing. And it is, it's another seed, that one's just in the ground right now. I don't even know if that one's starting to pop up.
Yeah, that's a whole other thing we couldn't broaden up. There's definitely things that we are not gonna get to today, or... I would like to try to stick to a one-minute closing, and in the closing, I'd like you to just tell me how you differ from your opponent. Go ahead, Barb.
It's that experience, it really is. I have lived in a number of different places. I've done a number of different jobs. I've worked for and with so many different people. I will tell you the truth, I think that it is rare among elected officials to find somebody who took a shower after work instead of before work. You know, who really comes from that working class rent, used to be a renter trying to scrape together the difference between your power bill and your unexpected car repair that hits you when you weren't ready for it. I really, I feel like those are the folks who don't have as much representation in our government at all, from the bottom to the top. We, I am one of those few voices on our current council. Our current council are more folks who have had a more privileged background. And so I'd like to represent again. Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
Ding.
So, I, that's in the ways that you just described, I, we don't differ in that. I've had many jobs, I've lived in many different places. I've been a renter. I just bought my first home with my husband, who manages the Pine Tavern, and he is on a manager of a restaurant salary. So, to say that privilege is, separates us. Yes, my parents were successful, and I went to a private high school, but I got cut off at the age of eighteen, just like anybody else might. And I have a fresh perspective because I'm new here, and I'm looking at all of this with a fresh set of eyes. I, there, I'm the mother of two boys, and we've got a young family, and there are a lot of young families like mine moving to Bend. And I want to be a voice for them.
Thank you. I know this is, you know, this is an exhausting process, and I really just thank both of you for your time and for the time you give me to our readers, because I think this really brings a lot of value for everyone who gets to watch this. So, best of luck.
I thank you for the information you're giving to our voters. It can, it can be hard for people to learn about local candidates in particular. I really appreciate all of you that take the time to, we say, go down ballot. You go all the way to the bottom of the ballot, talk to all of us, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just gonna tell you all, I got you all beat as far as the number of years in this community.
Oh, I know, right?
Forty!
Pounding it up.
You've got one of those steps.